Are we ready for this LTC on two or? Okay.
Yeah.
It is June 30th at 6:30 PM and we'll call the Finance Subcommittee meeting to order. The clerk, please call the role.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor, get you on Council Robinson.
Here.
You just made me a chancellor.
I did.
Yeah, thanks.
Congratulations on the promotion.
Thank you. So we have three items on the agenda tonight. Financial statements for year ending June 30th, federal awards program for year ending, and a management letter for June 30th. FY 2021 audit, management response, and Shed Park Pavilion rentals. And we have a presentation that CFO Connor Baldwin will be making. And also in attendance is auditor Kelly Oaks and Mike Gary, our city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I am going to try to bring a presentation up on the Zoom and hope that this works. No. Having a little trouble here. Bear with me one second. So that's on. All right, I think that will do it. No. Doesn't want to go to the next slides. What happened there? Okay. My apologies to the Subcommittee on the delay. Thank you very much, Connor Baldwin, Chief Financial Officer. This evening, before the Subcommittee, as the Chair mentioned, we have a number of items for review that were referred from the City Council. The one we will spend the most time discussing is the FY 2021 audit performed by Powers and Sullivan, our outside audit firm, as well as the informational report from the City Manager's Office in response to the management letter. And then finally, a motion response that was referred to the committee in April. So before I begin, I just want to add a little bit of background and for the committee and the folks who may be watching at home about audits, municipal audits in particular. So there's a few terms that I will likely use, some acronyms, and I just want to touch on background and some terms. So a financial audit is an examination of a municipality's financial records. There's many different types of audits. What we're talking about here is a financial audit, but there are also operational performance audits, investigations, forensic audits, et cetera. What we're doing here is, under contract with Powers and Sullivan, as I mentioned, they review the financial statements that we record in the general ledger for any material issues. They would correct those, and they also analyze the operations and make comments in the management letter for any efficiencies that they see, any weaknesses in internal controls that they may see during their audit, and they write those up in the management letter. Each year, the administration attempts to take any current year comments and address those, as well as any prior year comments, which may be unresolved, works towards those within the fiscal year in the hopes of resolving them for the next year. So the management letter is structured in three different components. There are prior year comments that are resolved, there are current comments, unresolved, and then there are new comments, and that is a standard of municipal audits. There are different types of comments, as I was just alluding to. Most are informational. There are other things known as material weaknesses, which are the most serious of the commentaries that may appear in an audit. I'm happy to report there were none of those for fiscal year FY 2021, but just, you know, for the folks watching at home, those are the most serious of any comments in a management letter. So to jump right into the FY 2021 audit, and this is something that's available online if anybody wanted to review the city's financial statements. A few highlights at the close of the current year, and you can see this on the presentation on the screen, the current year being FY 21. The city's governmental funds reported a combined ending fund balance of over $100 million, which was an increase of $32.1 million. That's all funds. It's important to note that on the city's general ledger, we have many, many different funds. That could be a Subcommittee meeting in and of itself. There's the general fund, there are special revenue funds, we have internal service funds, fiduciary funds, et cetera. But in the aggregate, the governmental funds saw an increase of $32 million. In FY 2021, the administration, in order to take advantage of favorable interest rates, we issued $6.3 million in general obligation refunding bonds in September of 2020. That is something that, for many years, we've been looking to do based on the rate environment to try to save money in the debt service budget. As we look forward to what appears to be a changing rate environment, that may not be an opportunity that is quite as readily available to us, but maintaining the city's good credit is an important factor nonetheless. So another notable item from the 2021 audit, and you'll have to remember that this time period is in the past, it's up through June 30th of calendar year 2021. The city incurred $26.9 million of expenses related to the COVID-19 pandemic, and that was funded by a variety of different sources. The most, perhaps most commonly known, was the CARES Act, but there were a number of other federal programs that flowed through the Planning and Development Department, through the ESG, Emergency Shelter Grant, the CDBG. Those all had their existing federal programs that threw additional appropriations from the federal government, had additional money that flowed through DPD, and those were used towards things like business assistance, emergency shelter, et cetera, and those are things that we had discussed at length in council meetings during the pandemic, some of those programs that were run through the DPD, but those are recorded and were audited by Powers and Sullivan. So moving forward to some areas of concern, and these are not new areas of concern, but they're worth mentioning here. The city's liabilities are something that come up time and again when we speak to rating agencies and they're looking at the city's credit. The two, when we talk about liabilities, the two major liabilities that we often discuss are what's known as OPEB, or Other Post-Employment Benefits, and those are the, those are retiree health insurance, deferred compensation or life insurance, and the aggregate total for the OPEB liability in 2021 was $859,367,705. That is a staggering number. If you consider the operating budget for FY 2023 with the general fund, the enterprise funds, we're at about a half a billion dollars, and this is greater than that. The other substantial liability that is on the city's balance sheet is the pension liability. So there's a little table there at the bottom that lists the total pension liability less the fiduciary net position. The pension liability is $293.6 million. We are currently on a funding schedule to meet our pension liability by the year 2037. Just recently, and I believe it was about a year or so ago, correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly, but the Retirement Board, which oversees the retirement plan, voted to extend the funding schedule by one year. So prior to that, we were on a schedule to 2020, strike that, 2036. They moved it out by one more year, and that was a result of a revised actuarial study. So every several years, the Retirement Board brings in an actuarial who looks at the mortality tables of all of the retirees, the health insurance plans, and revises the number based on a very detailed calculation. Typically, what we see is the number goes up after such a revaluation, and so in order to accommodate that without overly burdening the operating budget, the schedule was pushed out by one year. However, municipalities are required by state law, and this is a function of the Pension Reform Act, I believe from 2012, that we must meet our funding obligations by, I think 2037 is the latest you can push it. So the next bit of information, and this is a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance. There's a lot of numbers here, and it's the total of all of the revenues and expenditures in FY 2021. The most notable thing was the significant increase in fund balance in the general governmental funds in FY 21. So if you look at the bottom left of the screen, you'll see that the beginning fund balance of the general governmental funds in FY, so as of '71 FY 21 was 20, strike that, 27.9 million, and then the fund balance at the end of the year was 48 million, an increase of $20.4 million. There are many reasons behind that. Some of these we've discussed with this City Council, with the last City Council after we closed FY 21, but there was a significant amount of what we call turnbacks at the end of FY 21. Those were unspent appropriations, as well as the existence of federal funding to combat COVID. So a lot of our spending was shifted towards addressing the pandemic, and we had federal money, state and federal, to be more exact, to address those, so there was not as much reliance on the general fund during that year, which is uncommon. So it's not common that we will see a year like this again for some time. You know, it is not common that we see such an increase in the fund balance, but we are sitting on a very good financial position at the end of FY 2021. So unless there's any questions from the Subcommittee, I'd like to jump right into the management letter. These, the balance sheet and the income statement are a little bit more esoteric, but please...
So as far as the OPEB goes, is that common in a lot of municipalities to have such an outstanding balance that your long-term payment plans to try to get current on?
Yes, Counselor, and thank you for the question. It is, it is common. The size of our pension, strike that, our OPEB liability is larger than compared, say, a town, but if you were to look at us in comparison with another gateway community, another municipality of like size, we're all in the same boat, so to speak, and it was, it was, geez, I'm trying to think of a date, not too long ago that one of, so there are certain GASB requirements of how we present the financial statements, and prior to, I want to say maybe FY 2013, we weren't required to put the OPEB liability in the balance sheet. And so what happened, and if you were to look at the, I think it may be in the statement of net position, it's a negative number, but prior to having to recognize, and this was one of the GASB pronouncements, which are, they're like directives from the Accounting Standards Bureau, you had to incorporate that into your statement. So my point is, we all had to take that on at the same time, and it had a similar impact on all governmental balance sheets. Now, that's not to say that Lowell has addressed it in the same way as some other communities. Some towns have, you know, taken a much more aggressive funding schedule. Some towns or municipalities of smaller sizes have made dedicated appropriations within the operating budget to address OPEB. Lowell has not done that. We, that's not to say we have not made any strides. I think we've made significant strides, but we have, we have a very delicate balance in the budget. We're very heavily reliant on local aid, and so we have a little bit less flexibility than a more wealthy town. You know, to make appropriations, for some towns, for example, you know, will appropriate a percentage of all new employees, so if there's, for every new employee, there's an appropriation into the OPEB trust fund. Now, we maintain an OPEB trust fund, which was seated, and we had a discussion about this at the, at the most recent City Council meeting. It was seated with the remainder of the former Health Benefits Trust. That was $7.8 million. Since that time, we've built the fund balance up to $15 million, and the council established a policy in approximately 2018 to appropriate 5% of free cash every year, which by my estimation is a good policy, it's a good, it's a good thing that the city did, but when it's looked at by outside ratings agencies, it's seen as not enough. And so I, it was a little bit more than your question, but I hope that addresses...
Yeah, I appreciate it. So pretty much, any gateway city or any community similar in size is struggling with a similar OPEB kind of liability or owed position as we are. Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Robinson. Would you happen to know what percentage we're growing yearly in the OPEB? We're going up because we're not actually even level funding it, we're actually still going towards a deficit number. Is that something that's, it should be easily found just by looking at, I don't have the budget in front of me, I would have done it, because right now, you're 71% over the actual budget number, so the budget number is 502, and this is 859, so if you took it, it's 171%, so you're 71% over that number, and you're heading towards almost double that number shortly. And I just wonder, even with all the positions that we're not filling and the things that aren't going on, if we're going more to meeting that demand, or is it still just climbing exponentially that we're never going to get to that point? Because I don't, I agree with you that if you look at larger communities, there's really no way to balance this off, because if there's one employee, if every one employee, there's a percentage that is growing, and then that number, the more employees you have, the stronger it's going to grow, and that's harder to meet for everybody.
That's exactly right, Counselor, and I guess I'd attempt to answer your question by agreeing with you, and I don't have the exact calculation, that's certainly something we can look into, but it is, it is certainly the case that the OPEB liability is raising, is rising at a rate disproportionate to the affordability, the amount of assets we have to address it. And, but again, as Counsel Robinson mentioned, that's not something that's unique to Lowell, but it is, it is a staggering number. Not all employees are the same, is another comment, in terms of the valuation, public safety employees and the certain groups, you know, certain groups in the retirement system are not exactly the same, so a public safety official, when the actuary goes in and evaluates the mortality tables, how long somebody's going to live, how long the city would be required to pay benefits for, you know, that group can retire at 55, while the other group can retire at 65, but those are the calculations that go into the valuation. But every time we revalue, which is a requirement under the GASB, that number grows by a staggering amount.
Do they have a municipal, like, committee between different communities that is looking to address this outside of obviously the small communities who are addressing it, they're going to be able to, but like, is like New Bedford, Fall River, Lowell, Springfield, do they meet and look at this and then send their legislators back and say, you know, look, here's a major issue for funding sources, and could we somehow design something like that where maybe once a month, financial offices all meet, CFOs meet from the larger communities and say, okay, here's the resources we need to compete with what's going on? Maybe it's something that can be looked at if it's not happening.
Sure. It is something that we discuss very regularly internally, but with our peers, either through, you know, the Mass GFOA, the GFOA, which is, you know, all across the country, the Mass Municipal Association, these are topics from finance officials that we talk about every year, we talk about every time we get together, because we are all in similarly situated financial conditions. As to any relief that may be able to be provided, or help we could get from the state, I'm not aware of any. Certainly, you know, if there were something, you know, this administration would be first in line to advocate for something, but it has not been my experience that there has been anything from the state in terms of legislation that may, that may assist. I guess the one thing that comes to mind in response to your question, not for OPEB but for pension, is certain financial instruments that are available to municipalities through special legislation. These are pension obligation bonds whereby, you know, municipalities sell debt to finance their outstanding liability. And so to try to put this as plainly as I could, because some communities, I believe Quincy is one that did it most recently, but you have to receive special legislation to do this. So let's just use numbers, for example, say your liability is $200 million, so you issue a bond for $200 million, and if the, if the rate on the debt service is good when you issue that, your debt service may be less than your pay-as-you-go amount on the liability, but there have been, you know, many years ago, there's been some bad experience with those, there's a lot of risk involved, but those kinds of opportunities or financial instruments are available, and those are things that we look at, but we're very cautious when we take a look at them.
Do retirees pay the same percentage for healthcare as the working?
They do, Counselor, yes. That's 7525 is the split for both active and retired employees.
And do retirees get kicked off of the health plan when they get to a certain age and get forced into mass health?
So I, once you turn 65, if you're eligible for Medicare, you have to take it. It's not always the case that every retiree has the quarters, and so there are some, and I remember this from my days in HR, there are some retirees who are not eligible, who main, who stay on a regular plan, so to speak, as opposed to a Medicare supplement. And I forget the statutory reference, but the city did adopt that before moving to the GIC, and that was something that did save a good amount of money at the time, in terms of the liability.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions about it, so you guys really hit it all, I think, on that one, so.
I'll continue through the presentation if it pleases the Chair. So the next section, and thank you for your comments, this is really interesting stuff, is the management letter. And the management letter is perhaps one of the more salient points through the audit process. As I mentioned in the beginning, there are three different sections, resolved comments, current comments, and new comments. So on the slide in the presentation before the committee now, we've just bulleted out some of the resolved comments, so a few of these had to do with Section 108 Loan Fund and then budget reconciliation. These were comments that were made that have been resolved, and so they come off. Next year, you won't, you won't see these in the FY 22 audit. Some of the current comments that were unresolved, you know, you see them on the screen, purchase orders and dates, tax foreclosures, and I'll get into some of these in a moment. General ledger maintenance, checks written to and from the city, Sifa tracking. Sifa is the Schedule of Expenditures for Federal Awards. That's one of the audit reports. It's a, because the city receives so much federal funding, I believe the threshold is $750,000, but if you receive above that threshold, you're required by the federal government to do an audit of all your grant programs. That's what the Sifa is. This comment was related to tracking the, I may get this acronym wrong, but the CDFA or CFDA number within our MUNIS system, so one of the things that was noted by the audit firm was that not all of our fund codes included the CDFA number as a crosswalk. So they suggested we did that. That's something that has been implemented, we expect that to be resolved for the next year, as well as the next one, long and short-term bond proceeds. This was a function of a change in law that happened in 2018. The way that bond and ban premiums are recorded on the general ledger was changed, and so it used to be the case that when the city would issue debt, the premium earned on the bond was a general fund receipt. Municipal modernization changed that, so you had to put it in a special reserve, and it had to be segregated out by fund if they were enterprise funds. This was something that, you know, we've resolved and we expect will be off the next year's management letter for FY 2022. The matter of purchase orders and dates is something that's been an issue with the city for many years. We have varying success with, you know, with working with departments, new department heads, and at its very basis, there is an ordinance on the books, it's called the Reserve System Ordinance, and it requires department heads, before making any expenditure, they have to issue a purchase order to encumber the funds. And the reason for that is very elementary or straightforward, that in order to make sure that the city doesn't spend in excess of the amounts budgeted, the funds need to be encumbered so that they're held aside when a contract is executed. Now, in the event, because I suppose the risk that's involved if that doesn't happen is that an invoice is presented for payment by the city auditor where there are no, there's no appropriation. And so it's very important, it's been an ordinance in the city for many, many years, and it's a practical procedural matter that we remind department heads about. We've had leadership meetings with city manager's leadership team where we, you know, issue reminders, we issue the purchasing manual, we remind them about this requirement, but it's an ongoing procedural thing that we continue to remind department heads about. Next, please.
Counsel Robinson. I did too.
Thank you. Quick question. So as far as purchase orders and dates, and it seems like it's an ongoing issue as referenced, is there technology or software or something that might help alleviate some of these issues that we need to take a look at? And again, I know this has popped up in many different areas, is there something available that would kind of ease this burden as well?
Thank you, Counselor. I think the MUNIS system is very good with, especially as it relates to purchase orders and requisitions. I think really it comes down to training, and so, you know, some of the things that the finance department has worked with auditing and, you know, purchasing, which is part of the finance department, you know, is working with the budget officials within the larger departments. I don't want to call out any specific by name, but, you know, to make sure that they know the process from cradle to grave, so to speak. So I'll lay it out here. So, I'll lay it out here. When a department receives a quote, that's when you enter a requisition. It has to flow through the approval process. It has to be approved by the department head, by the CFO, depending on the dollar amount, and then by the city auditor. And then purchasing, once it has all of its approvals, will convert it into a purchase order. And only then does the department have the authority to spend the money. Now, that sometimes can, there's time involved with the workflow process, with soliciting quotes. The quotes have to be attached. And so, these are all things that we need to train employees. But I believe the Munis system is very good. The component of it, it's called Tyler Content Manager, allows us to attach contracts, quotes to the requisition. And this becomes invaluable to the city auditor, to myself, when we're trying to search out documentation. In the event that we are audited, which happens, you know, especially with things like capital projects or the Lowell High School project, for example, it's almost certain, well, it's a part of the MSBA process that there's a post-project audit. And so, having all of that information there is invaluable to the city to just be able to, at the click of a button, you know, press, spit out all the invoices, the requisitions, the contracts, et cetera. But I do believe that Munis is that software. It's just a matter of training.
Thank you.
Do you want to go, Counselor? You want me to go? Okay. So, my question is, so we set up vendors in our system, obviously. Do we send them out notification letters telling them that we're not going to pay them if they don't have a purchase order?
No, we don't currently do that. We don't send letters to the vendor. But if a department submits an invoice to be paid as a non-purchase order, then we send, we in auditing will send that, return it to the department. And it usually goes through a back and forth, you know, why they didn't get a purchase order. They, you know, kind of come begging for mercy. But a lot of these that I do see, that I've seen since I've been here, may be smaller amounts. So, you know, everything requires a purchase order here in the city. So, you know, perhaps we could consider a policy where we set a dollar threshold, like, you know, anything under $1,000 doesn't require a purchase order. You know, I mean, that's just an idea because a lot of the, a lot that I do see may be smaller dollar values.
So, we do it on everything? Okay, because I've done business with municipalities personally, and it's over $1,000 that I had to do it for them. But I also, our company does send out letters to all the vendors too, letting them know that they will not get paid from us. It's kind of like a policy. And I don't know if it's enforceable or not, but I'm just saying, because if they come back and the funds aren't there, like you just said.
Yeah. Our contracts are written, our contracts are written that way.
Right. Yeah, we do with all of those. And as far as the employees, this has been an ongoing dialogue. I know with the school department, there were purchase orders that have come forward later on that we've had to approve, I think, after the fact for payment. Is there any type of, I understand there's new employees and everything, but is there like a discipline process for, you know, repeatedly doing things like this?
Thank you. So, there is. And I think one of the, one of the things that Ms. Oaks mentioned is perhaps we take a look at the Reserve System Ordinance. One of the, one thing being that, you know, the threshold for purchase orders is a function of an ordinance that was created many years ago. So, maybe it needs to be updated a little bit. Secondly, and to your question directly, Madam Chair, is there is, in the ordinance, language that violation is grounds for termination. Now, maybe that could be updated or, you know, there could be some additional detail as to steps or process that needs to happen before, such as, you know, sending out notices to vendors, et cetera, that could be written into the ordinance. But, you know, we do typically leave it to the departments at year end. Now, I guess I will say that auditing does remind departments every year a number of times as we move into the year-end process, which we're just at the end of right now. Here we are on the last day of the fiscal year. But, you know, that's something that starts in April, March, April, where the auditor will send out a communication to departments, let them know, and will send them a list of all their open purchase orders and say, you know, "Here's the timeline for year end." Typically, there's a shut-off for, a shut-off for new purchase orders, a shut-off for submission of invoices for any purchase orders that are open. And that essentially is the reminder to get in touch with your vendors, get your invoices in. If you've received these goods or these services have been performed, we have a hard deadline for the fiscal year. That's something that's set by statute, the June 30th, end of the fiscal year. There's a little bit of time allotted for municipalities, 15 days up into the next fiscal year to handle year-end transactions, whether it's transfers, and the council just considered a number of them at the last council meeting, but to pay bills associated with the prior year because it's a logistical challenge for auditing. I mean, I don't want to speak for the auditor, but there are a significant volume of invoices that come in at the end of the year.
Yeah, right, yeah. Is it easy to issue a purchase order for an employee? Is it an easy process? It's not something that like has to wait for an approval or anything like that? It's just that they have to enter it in the system? Is that?
Yeah, they do initiate the entering in the system. It does go through a workflow approval process though, through the department head.
It is not a long process.
No, and it's all electronic. It is very easy. And, you know, the turnaround time usually is quick. We so.
But the small dollar amount is still pretty unusual, I would think. But I'm not sure if that's something that you would bring a recommendation on changing the amount forward? Or would that be?
Well, we could take a look at some other communities at their thresholds. You know, there is, if we raised it too high, I think there is some risk there. But it may be that it needs to come up a little bit as, you know, to adjust for inflation.
Right. Especially for the schools because each individual school, they place, you know, they do their own purchasing and they, you know, buy a lot of small from-school specialty or, you know, supplies that they need to educate the children. And those are, you know, usually all less than $1,000, and there's a lot of them. So, it takes up a lot of time to go through that approval process for.
But then there's still a control, there's still a good control, right? So.
Right, right, yes.
Thank you. Counselor, get you.
So, there's a couple of things that just were said that when you go through procurement, Mass Procurement basically says, "Anything less than $10,000, you use good faith purchasing. Over $10,000, you need three quotes." And I'm not sure if the city's at $5,000, you need three quotes, but most municipalities are stringent than the state is. They say $5,000, you need three quotes because of friendships. Well, small purchases also follow under the same guidelines. Whether you buy five times from the same vendor, small purchases, once it goes over a certain threshold of $10,000, then even the smallest item from that vendor still needs three quotes. And I know that municipalities don't normally fall that quickly under that. But a lot of the small, there's no reason why people are purchasing anything without a purchase order because at the beginning of the fiscal year, you can get a blanket purchase order to Lowe's for $5,000. And if you need that small purchase, you purchase it out of that. And then, as CFO Baldwin said, towards March, you start locking those down and saying, "Okay, you didn't use this much. We're not going to allow, we're going to reduce it by this much and hold it." Some of the problems are this, when you go to a service, you can't provide a service to anybody without having a purchase order because you have to pull prevailing wage sheets. So, just because your friend is the lawn guy down the street and you want him to cut your lawn and you want to pay him because you gave a W-9, if there is no prevailing wage sheet, the city cannot pay the person. And the person gave you those services for free. So, if somebody renders you a service and you don't have a purchase order in place, that service is now rendered free. It is the contractor's responsibility to have the purchase order in place, not the municipality in the state's eye. And I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but it cannot be paid or because there is no prevailing wage sheets, there is no anything behind it. And when you look at some of the contracts that are actually being secured, as CFO Baldwin said, you're supposed to have the same exact dollar amount as what the contract is awarded at. So, if you take the water department, how they have a contractor come in and he bids something for $600,000. Well, you have to secure $600,000 somewhere before you can award the contract. Sometimes around here, contracts are being awarded without having that $600,000 attached to it. And that's what the auditor chases down and says, "Look, no, you got to put these numbers here." Or even procurement does upstairs, Mike Vaughn does the same thing. So, when you start looking at these things, they have the best policies in place. How do they work? The problem comes down to, and it's a challenge for the city of Lowell, is just training middle management. I think that's what's lacking, and I think that's one of the goals the manager has in place. And I think that when we start setting goals for the manager for his, and that's what we got to do, is look at middle management training on these things. And when you go off to like procurement training, they tell you not to have an in-house person train procurement people because then it becomes, in their mind, not mine, collusion. They feel as though somebody can set it up so that they don't. The Munis system that CFO Baldwin is talking about is the best piece in place. The only problem that comes in is if CFO Baldwin takes a week off. He has to render that his approval, he'll give his approval to, say, the city manager to look at. So, someone else has to fill in for him, or you're going to have to wait a week for those approvals, which sometimes they take time to do. And that's really what holds up a lot of that system. And when you talk about the auditor, she probably gets 200 a day. And when it comes into, you know, the July season, you're probably going to get, you know, 4,000 of them just in July. So, that's a challenge for her to actually look at everything. So, she has to somehow rely on the people under her to be trained somewhat and attached to things perfectly. Because there is no way one person in this place can look at all of those and scrub them and investigate everything. That's why these reports come out. They're not saying that the process is broken. What they're saying is at times, there were challenges and one person relied on another person to do it. Because I'm sure Connor has his plate filled with them when he comes in, and he has all his other duties to do. So, for him to check back and say, "Okay, there were three quotes on this. Okay, this is under that. Okay, this person spent $7,500 this date on this one, and now $5,000 here. Why isn't there this on this?" It's a challenge for everybody in government. That's why the middle management is very, very important to train. And I agree with Counselor Scott when she said, you know, "Do we hold people accountable? Have we written anybody up?" I'm not saying fire anybody by far. But if you send that message across after training, of course, because it's hard to do it before training, right? If you train people in the correct manner and then you say, "Okay, I relied on you and you did this in here. We're going to write you up and start that process." It will stop, but it will never truly be 100%. I promise you that. But I think that you'll see that your powers and Sullivan will go the other way. And I think CFO Baldwin, when I worked here with him also, he will tell you that I was already into this stuff, so I would have it all boom, boom, boom on because I knew that I didn't want to lose my retirement because someone came back in and said, "Eric did this for this person and didn't get this." So, I think that that's the challenge also to the employee is without being trained, they're actually putting their whole job on the line when they start signing these things because the inspector general is no joke. It comes through, and people have a hard time getting jobs after they say collusion and things like that. So, I do think your process is the right direction. I just think that middle management training would be the key to it. And somebody in there just saying, "Hey, look, we're partners in this. I have to rely on you." And the only time you're going to look at it is at the end of the year or an investigation piece because there is no way, there's nobody in here who's Superman who can look at all of those things and make sure that they're all going through. But going back to what Chairman Scott said, you know, when you're looking at the small purchases, I would say that at the beginning of the year, if people use a certain vendor for a certain period of time, they should probably have open POs to hold that funding for you to make it easier. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
So, based on this part of the discussion, do you think it makes sense for us to bring forward a recommendation? Obviously, training is something that we really need to emphasize. So, when we start making recommendations coming out of the subcommittee, it sounds like that's a critical component of this, is really to focus on the training piece. You said the Munis piece is the software that can perform. And do you also recommend us taking a hard look or making a recommendation to take a hard look at the Reserve System Ordinance? Is that something, again, that needs to be tweaked? And if so, I think that's something that this subcommittee at least should bring forward for consideration. Thanks.
CFO Baldwin.
If I may, Madam Chair, I would agree. I think respectfully, I would request that the subcommittee make a recommendation, perhaps to the council, to have the finance department review the Reserve System Ordinance and bring back to the council some recommendations for perhaps updates or changes for the full council to consider.
Thank you.
Make that in the form of a motion. Second, Counsel Robinson.
Make it in the form of a motion, yeah. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second by Counselor Getyou. All in favor? Say aye, aye. Okay. And we'll move on to the next item. We're all set.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, finally, we'll, on this section, we'll talk about the new comment. And, you know, I've been doing this for a little while and have seen several years' worth of audits. There was only one new comment this year. I think that is indicative of a good financial operation. However, the one that was included this year is pretty substantial, and that's relative to the payroll process. And so, just to put this in perspective, and I'll leave this, the text of the comment on the screen here. The city employs approximately 2,980 full and part-time employees. Of those, about 2,700 are represented by unions. The rest are either seasonal ordinance or casual labor. And we, as we've discussed in prior council meetings, we run payroll every week. So, every week, the city auditor runs a payroll and an accounts payable warrant. And that is a significant undertaking by the staff in the departments, the staff in the central auditing department to check everything that comes in. And so, in working with Powers and Sullivan, our internal auditor, Ms. Oaks, worked with our external auditors, you know, to make some recommendations. And those recommendations were included in this comment, which I'll read in part. "The auditors recommended that the city perform a full review of the internal controls in place surrounding the current payroll process, focusing in on areas that need to be strengthened. As part of the review, we recommend this general ledger access to the payroll module be reviewed to ensure employees' access matches their job descriptions. And they further review the city, continue to explore the implementation of the employee action entry program within Munis. The general ledger module would move all payroll and employee information changes to an electronic process and eliminate the need for carbon copy forms and duplications. Electronic entry and approval would improve efficiencies and reduce the likelihood of errors and irregularities. Finally, we recommend that the payroll change edit process, excuse me, edit reports be reviewed on a regular and timely basis to ensure all changes were appropriate and properly approved prior to running of the payroll process." And so, there was a duplicate slide there, so I'll just skip right by. This comment, I think there's a few things worth considering. And so, there's some bullets here up on the screen. Some of the ways that already we've begun to address some of these comments and look towards efficiencies and improvements in the process, we threw a working group between the city and the schools. The school department is our largest department in the city. That shouldn't likely not be a surprise to anyone here or at home. And I think in my report here, so of that 2,980 full and part-time employee number that I quoted a moment ago, 2,061 of them are employed by the Lowell Public Schools. So, a substantial amount. You know, as the Chair is well aware from her time on the school committee, there are several different options available to employees in the school department for the manner in which they can be paid. So, employees in the school department can be paid, and please correct me if I'm wrong on this, Madam Auditor, but weekly for 52 weeks, they can be paid on a 42-week schedule. Or there's a third option, which includes a balloon payment right at the end of the fiscal year. They're paid on a 52-week basis, but then receive one check for the summer months. And so, this type of process is very complicated. It's not unheard of in Massachusetts municipal finance, but it is certainly, you know, something that Lowell has done for a very long time. And, you know, I think one of the ways that we've come up through the working group and through our discussions internally in the finance team that may be one of the best ways to address some of these issues noted in the management letter would be to transition to biweekly payroll. And so, that's a topic that has been discussed in the city council for a number of years. I'll pause for your question, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Before I left, I thought that was a direction the city had moved. And I thought a lot of the union side, city-side employees had already conceded that a negot- And I thought a lot of the union side, city-side employees had already conceded that in negotiations throughout the years. Where are we with trying to get everybody on board with the biweekly?
Thank you for your question. So as you will recall, and to some of the history, I guess, leading up to this point, throughout the 2012 through maybe 18 or 19, through negotiations, each one of the unions, both on the city and the school side, did agree to allow the option to switch to biweekly payroll. So it's included in all of the contracts with the city side and the school unions. However, we have not made the switch for a number of logistical reasons. And so at this point, we are looking to move forward. And so what we're here to present to the subcommittee is some of the details. I think one of the things that is important is to communicate to the employees, it would be a substantial change for the employee base as to, you know, how they receive their pay. And payroll is, by my estimation, the most important expense. Missing payroll is something that, in any organization, municipal or private, is a really big deal. That's, you know, people expect to be paid. They expect to be paid in a regular manner on a certain time. And if that doesn't happen, or if there's a problem with transition or with a pay, you know, there are serious repercussions for people financially, personally, and could be a risk to the city as well. And so to bring us to date, there were a number of, so there were union negotiations, which we've settled with all of the bargaining units, a number of logistical, technical considerations that had to be made in MUNIS to sort of get us ready for this. The things that, you know, to give credit where it's due, the payroll department in the city auditor's office has been working diligently with the payroll department in the schools, which, as I mentioned, is our largest department with the biggest number of employees and has a very complex pay period, pay schedule. And so what we're looking at now is moving towards a biweekly payroll as of January 1, January 1, 2023. And I'll pause here for any questions, but I'd like to spend a little bit of time talking about some of the details.
Any follow-up?
A quick follow-up. I was told that are our seasonal help employees, some of youth program kids, they're being paid biweekly currently? Are you aware of that?
No, no, all employees are currently being paid weekly, even the recreational, seasonal. There's no biweekly payroll currently.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Gitcher.
Do we currently have a software system that we're going to use MUNIS as the payroll driver?
Yes.
So the executive time? Do we have people who are already using it?
Yes, the DPW department just recently got the executive time up and running and they have been using it for the last couple of weeks.
Are the employees actually punching in their time when it comes to you? Or do they just go to their phones and put it in?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't have an answer for that. I don't know. I believe they're punching in.
Oh, so they don't have access through their phones, through the internet?
We'd have to get a report on that from the DPW commissioner. It is my understanding, though, in the implementation of the time clocks, that employees would either punch or use a card. I know that there is the capability within the system for a remote punch-in, so to speak. I don't believe that that was something that, you know, that we wanted to implement right upfront at first. Certainly, you know, as we get more comfortable with the time clocks, you know, it may be a possibility for people who report to remote sites. It may be something that would help them to better record their time.
I know where I'm employed, executive time, you can only use the web provider that's at the school to be able to punch in. So you have to be connected to theirs and able to put in your times or even control it and approve your own time. Because there's a mechanism in there that says the employee approves their time first and then the supervisor goes over and approves it. So would we roll out something like this? And I know you guys probably don't have a plan yet, but would you roll out something like this on the weekly basis coming in the next few months by department so that they could understand what they're getting into rather than lumping everybody in it once in January? You could do it on the weekly schedule like you did with DPW, but do it in more places so that they can actually punch in. You can get the system up and running, get comfortable with it, and then just, it's a button in there that would switch it over to a two-week payroll. Because I think that would be helpful for you because when they switched over probably less than a year ago where I am, it was total chaos because everyone went it once. But once everyone got familiar a little bit with it, it is much, much better than anything I've ever seen. It just flows quick. It helps our payroll a lot. I think that it is the only way to go. It's just how do you roll it out so it's effective to everybody and everyone gets that buy-in factor and doesn't say, "Oh, I missed a punch," you know. Because what's going to happen is when they miss a punch, the supervisor has to go into the computer and actually put them in. So it's something to say, "Okay, I was here," and this and that. So I think that it might be wise to roll out the executive time while you're still on weekly for a lot of people, and then roll out the two-week payroll kind of separately. Don't do it all at once. Because if you do that all at once, I guarantee you, Kelly, you won't be smiling anymore.
I have just a question, one more question about it. As far as the school side goes, are we on board with them being ready to make this change? I mean, are they no longer using carbon copied paper and they're on board with logging things online?
Yes, yes. So I'm happy to report that over the last couple of weeks, they have moved toward the employee action where they're entering their own changes, their own onboarding in the workflow and it's, you know, flowing through an approval process within the school and then comes to auditing where the final approval before it hits the actual live payroll. So yes, they are transitioning.
Glad to hear you say that.
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent, yeah. And as far as moving forward with this, the teacher's salary, like the balloon payment, that, does that still have multiple plans that will happen? Or is it?
Yeah.
Those options will still be there even though we're going to the two weeks? It's not like everyone's going to just go to biweekly and all those options are going away? Those are negotiated?
Right, yes, yes. So the teachers and so the school personnel, it is a complicated process, it's a very complicated payroll. I don't think the biweekly is going to, you know, make it worse. So they, you know, teachers work 42, 42 weeks per year. And so, you know, typically if they select that option to be paid, their contracted amount will be divided by the 42 weeks. When they're done school, they're done being paid over summer until they return for school. Then there is also the option to be paid over 52 weeks. And people who select the 52 weeks get either a lump sum, or there are people that get paid eight weeks over the summer, nine weeks over the summer, or 10 weeks over the summer. So all those options is why this payroll is so complicated and...
Do we have to offer those options?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, it is something I've mentioned.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would have to be negotiated. I do know other municipalities, you know, offer the, you know, you can get paid 52 weeks, but they get the lump sum payroll only. So you run a lump sum that's, you know, due before June 30th, but you don't have these options to be paid over various weeks.
Right, that's what I'm talking about, those.
Yeah.
Not just, I understand it's different, you know, people want to get paid the whole year, they want to get paid when they're working, but not the way you're talking about week by week, a different...
Right, right. Administratively, this is, this, you know, the way we have it here is very difficult to, you know, pay. But, you know, we just finished the summer pay for fiscal year '22. We started it last Friday, just finished it. I had people down here still working. And, you know, so it went well. We learned a lot about the system. You know, I felt comfortably, I personally reviewed every one of them myself and I hope, you know, to the best of my ability, there were no overpayments that I think was, you know, accurate and I was, I was pretty comfortable signing those payroll warrants, so.
Great. So should we entertain a motion then, right now, as far as bringing a recommendation for a plan to the full council for implementation of biweekly payroll?
I think that's a good idea. I would respectfully add that it's likely a good idea also to maybe have at least one more meeting, perhaps a joint meeting with the school's finance subcommittee. As I mentioned, they're our largest department. I think we want to make sure that the employees are well aware of what's happening. And we may want to make sure that, you know, we're all on the same page. I think we feel like we are internally with our partners on the school side, but perhaps, you know, with, certainly this is at the...
So just to help inform your plan going forward, do you want to include the school side in it? Counsel Gitcher.
I do agree that a six-month notice to anybody on that change or when you set exact dates, there's plenty of time to be prepared for it. I think that's fair. And I do agree with the process going forward because it's the best system for the auditor, who I have spoken to multiple times about the payroll issues. And I just think that it makes a lot of sense. And six months is more than fair. And I think if you roll out how to get to the executive time early, I think it's more than fair. We didn't get that in any place I ever worked. It was, here's the system, that's what you got, and done. But I think it gives people an opportunity to either save or get ready for. And I think that if we notify the school department the same thing, it's fair. It's up to them to notify their employees that an action's going to be taken and here it is based off of their own contracts. And I thank you for even thinking about that because most people would say September is when it is. And I think that, you know, in light of everything, to even be willing to wait that long sometimes is a challenge. But and I thank you for doing that.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Yeah, I would support moving forward with this recommendation. And my only concern would be, will the city be reaching out to the unions that have already, because again, like you said, from 2012 until, say, 18, this might be a conversation that people have forgotten about. It's quite some time now, so at least reaching out to the unions and saying, "Hey, this is coming," and maybe a little bit of informational pieces, saying, "Get ready for it," you know?
Absolutely, Counselor. I believe some of the unions, as it was negotiated, require a certain notice. So we will certainly meet the requirement of providing notice. But we want to communicate more than that. So we want to, you know, for the unions, for the non-affiliated employees, the ordinance employees, we want to make sure to give notice well in advance. So absolutely, that's a great idea.
Thank you.
So you don't need any actions from us then, right now, on it? We're just, we're just planning...
No, this is informational. It is, it is in part in response to the audit, but we're moving forward.
Okay, thank you. We have additional items to discuss?
It's not on the, on the presentation, but there was another item, Madam Chair. If I could just make mention of it, there was an informational update provided to the council in April relative to the Shed Park pavilion rentals. And so in the, in the report, it was outlined, and this came in connection with the preliminary ARPA budget, I believe. And so the Recreation Department Division, excuse me, of Health and Human Services, Mr. Fattacanti, provided a report of the usage of the Shed Park Pavilion, people who, residents and others who rent the pavilion for parties or for other events. And I believe of, of the report, 46 point, 46 and a third percent of the organizations that utilized the pavilion were from the 01852 ZIP code. But that is an informational report. The, it is our expectation that we'll bring forward a revised ARPA plan to the, to this subcommittee and the full council sometime soon. We've completed our public input sessions. They were well attended in most, most instances. I attended one early on and there was some really great input that we received from residents. So Mr. Flynn is compiling all of that information to put together a revised report that we do expect to get some discussion on sometime soon.
Counsel Gitcher.
One thing that's really noticeable in that report is how many people do not pay to use it. And that, and those costs do get passed on to the non-rate, non-users of our tax base. And one of the things that concerns me is most of the ones who don't pay to use it and don't have really a lease to use it is the school department. And they're always telling us about the stuff that they rent off of us and we don't repair, but there are areas that they use that has no obligation to the city. And this is a major one that needs major infrastructure work in, when you look at the roof and other things. So I just would caution the POCS department, not the POCS department, the POCS board, on how much they give away this utility. And we really only, when we do rent it, cover the cost of the people who are actually there maintaining something. We don't actually have an over and above cost for maintenance of the building or have a separate fund that funding would go into that would say, "Okay, this is the rental for this building. Here is the funds that come in for this building and this is what's used to maintain this building." Which I think at some point, we're going to have to start looking at for individual buildings that are in high use and high demand like this, if this is in high demand like they're saying. And I understand that, you know, ZIP codes are always going to be more user-friendly to people who live in the neighborhood. That's just, it's just the way it is. If something's in our neighborhood too, it's something that we're going to walk to and use. And I just think that when we get buildings like this that heavily used and not paid for, we can't find revenues to support the maintenance of them. And people have to understand that, whether it's a school, whether it's another function, if you're using it, there's a cost on our end for having that type of facility. And I would state to the POCS board the same thing, is, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, you have to charge everybody every penny, but there has to be something that goes back into that so that they have a nice facility to use.
I wonder if that would be comparable to the parking garages. So we do charge parking fees for the school department, correct?
There are fees included in the maintenance of effort agreement for school staff who park in the downtown garages. The, the parking enterprise is an enterprise fund, so the receipts are segregated from the general fund. I believe to Counsel Gitcher's point, the fees associated with parks are part of the general fund, but it is a, the fees are set by the fee schedule. And it is something that we could consider, as we've discussed in the council meetings. We're going to take a look at that schedule, perhaps setting aside a capital component to the fees. However, the, I could be wrong about this, but I think that the, that particular fee also needs approval by the Board of Parks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, any other? Oops, Counsel Robinson.
I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Fattacani for this report. And this was kind of referred as part of the ARPA discussion. And it was never really a dispute of how much it's used or even really where it's used from, as much as it's the only, only venue with that option in the city. And that's where the discussion really kind of originated. So, but I'd like to thank the rent department for providing this report.
I'll thank CFO Baldwin and Auditor Kelly Oaks and Michael Geir for being here tonight. I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Counsel Gitcher, second by Counsel Robinson, all in favor. Aye, me adjourned.